Yes, sir, I'm here.
All right, I'll just turn it over to you and let you introduce the folks or Brad introduce everybody.
Great, thank you, sir. Good evening, everybody. I'm Alex. So I'm the Stallings Town Manager for those of you don't know me. And I'd actually like to turn it over to our Planning Director, Mr. Sean. So Max, I think you're going to do some introductions.
Hey, good afternoon. Thank you. So, you know, as we all know, Stallings is growing exponentially and we see a need for additional transportation options. Our presenters tonight will show you how this study helps the town address future land use decisions and how to guide the infrastructure planning and programming stages for the Silver Line. I know it may be difficult to imagine 10, 20 years in the future, but the council has adopted initiative to support the Link Silver Line to come to Stallings. And additionally, the atrium hospital will spur development along the areas of the proposed Silver Line. Staff sees the need for direction from council at a future meeting, not this meeting, on incorporating development opportunities for the Silver Line into our development ordinance, comprehensive land use plan, transportation plan, and small area plans. The study was funded by CRTPO, Charlotte Regional Transportation Planning Organization, and is intended to establish a collaborative starting point for transit oriented development around those Link Silver Line stations. CAT staff will present information about the Link Silver Line and the Kilderson team will focus on transit oriented development study and discuss implementation tools. And I will now turn it over to the presenters.
All right, thanks. Thanks, Max. So yeah, so my name is Scott Corel and I'm with Kilderson and Associates. And we will very quickly just do a couple of introductions of our team and just so you know who we all are and then then we'll hand it over to to John. So John, sorry, Caitlin, why don't you go next?
Yeah, my name is Caitlin Tobin. I'm with Kilderson Associates and have been supporting Scott on the TOD study and Yolanda.
Thanks, Caitlin. I'm Yolanda Delong with TransLink Consulting.
All right, and John?
Good evening. I'm John Howard. I work with CATS. I'm the Project Manager for the TOD study.
All right, thank you. All right, so let me just-
And Scott, we actually had Jarell join. Do you want to-
Yeah, I'm sorry. I didn't see Jarell on there. Jarell, do you want to introduce yourself too?
Sure. I'm Jarell Leonard. I am with, I'm the Transit Planner. I'm also the Project Manager for the CRTPO side and I'm with CRTPO, which is also known as Charlotte Regional Transportation Planning Organization.
All right, great. Thanks, Jarell. All right, so let me just let me share my screen here and then we'll just we'll jump into this. Okay, is everybody seeing that? All right, excellent. All right, so just very quickly, so we did the welcome, just to give everybody a sense of what we're going to talk about this evening. John's going to give us an overview of the Link Silver Line project and then Yolanda will cover the principles for for transit oriented development. And then I'll talk for a few minutes about the actual study that we did and then and some implementation tools for you. So with that, I'll hand it over to John.
Thank you, Scott. Good evening, everyone again. So I'm going to give you a real brief background of where we are with the Silver Line project. Then we can spend more time on the actual TOD study, part of the presentation. But back in 2006, the Silver Line was adopted to the 2030 System Update Plan, along with other transit options with bus and streetcar. But with changes in the city and all around the city as well, we chose to go back and look at the Silver Line alignment again and go through some refinement analysis along with the Kilderson team to have the design and engineering piece with also the TOD supportive information as well to help make sure you make a good decision about the refinements along the alignment. So two years ago, January 2020, it seemed like a long time ago, CATS began that refinement process. And again, we did work with the TOD consultants to make sure that we had both sides of the of the information available. And the refinements to the LPA were actually adopted by the MTC back in 2021 April. But we also went back last week, actually, to the MDC again for two additional stations that are in Center City. So now we have a complete package of the LPA and the CATS design team will now go into more detailed design and environmental review for the Silver Line. Next slide, please. So again, the alignment is about 29 miles stretching from Belmont in Gaston County down Wexson Boulevard, past the airport, through Center City, and then down Independence Boulevard and then terminating at the end line in Union County. So on this map, you see all the stations that are outlined on the map along with the alignment. And what you see in purple, which is the southeastern section, this would be Phase A of the design and engineering for the project. So Phase A would basically begin at the Charlotte Gateway Station uptown and then would terminate at the CPCC Levine Campus in Matthews. And that's proposed to be the first phase. And that's because of good ridership numbers and other information that we've received along the way. Phase B would be in the lighter purple, the purple color, the lilac or lavender. And that would extend from Charlotte Gateway Station out west to I-45 along Wexson Boulevard. And then the gray that you see, one gray extension is leading towards Belmont in Gaston County. And the second gray line in the southeast would extend into Stallings and Indian Trail. And again, with those being outside of Mecklenburg County, we would have to seek regional funding with other partners to make sure we can afford to build those extensions to those other jurisdictions. Next slide, please. And this effort is taking a different approach where we've had a lot of different planning efforts that are being done. We have not only the Silver Line project itself, but we've got the rail trail, which has been very popular in the city along the South Corridor alignment. We have the Connect Beyond Plan, which was 12 county effort around Mecklenburg County. We also had the Charlotte 2040 Comprehensive Plan that looks at land use comprehensively for the first time in a number of years. And we also have NC DOT projects to coordinate with. We also had Gaston Union County planning efforts that we also included in the planning research of this project. The town of Matthews is heavily involved in this. And of course, we have the Link Silver Line TOD project that we'll be talking in more detail tonight about. So this is a kind of snapshot of where we've been and where we are. We started with a lot of public engagement and will continue that along the way. But in the top, you see a planning effort. Initially, we had system planning, major investment studies, alternative analysis, and the adoption and refinement of the LPA, which again was done in conjunction with the TOD team. And then we are in that phase of pre-project development, which will last about one to three years. There's going to be an environmental scoping effort within that and a 15 to 30% design effort, which goes a little bit deeper to where we are now in terms of refining the alignment even more than where we are today. And then a draft environmental impact statement that we anticipate to be within this planning effort. Moving forward, we'll go into project development. That's about another two years out from that, which will lead into a 65% design package. And then the final environmental impact and statement and a record of decision anticipated in that timeframe. From that, we move to project engineering, which then gets us even more details and it's pretty much the final step and then make sure that we know exactly where the line is going to be, the station locations and everything that goes into the alignment corridor planning. And that'll be about one to three years. And then finally, going to construction, about five to eight years beyond that. And this leads into about the 2033, 2035 timeframe. And after that, we'll have the alignment up and running for operations and revenue service. Next slide, please. Oh, that was my last slide. With that, I'll turn it back over to Scott to take you through the TOD workshop, part of the presentation.
Yeah, thanks, John. So I'm actually going to hand it off to Yolanda to talk about the principles for transit oriented development.
Right. Thank you so much, Scott. As Scott mentioned, I'm Yolanda Delong with TransLink Consulting and I'll be talking to you about the principles for TOD. Being able to walk, bike, and take transit to your everyday needs is a sign of a healthy, vibrant, and sustainable place to live. Transit-oriented development, commonly known as TOD, is about creating those places and connecting community members to opportunities, jobs, healthcare, and education. It is proactively planning our communities around stations to best leverage the future links Silver Line investment. All right, next slide, please, Scott. TOD is about leveraging transit to support enhanced communities. A successful implementation of TOD means we are optimizing mobility and access, proactively planning land uses around transit, paying close attention to community design, and providing equitable access to services, jobs, and housing for all. The first aspect of TOD is mobility and access. The success of transit depends on station accessibility. The more robust and tightly connected the street network is around a station, the larger the capture area of the station. A connected street network promotes walking, bicycling, and provides more driving connections to transit vehicles and buses. A rail trail also promotes pedestrian and bicycle trips. TOD comes in many sizes. Not all TODs have to be at the scale of South End. TODs can be smaller scale and small-town downtowns are a great example of how this concept can be realized. In Mount Washington, Maryland, for example, there's a walk-up kiss-and-ride station with some short-term parking. And the park-and-ride or commuter parking is one mile north of the station. The second aspect of TOD is managing land uses so there are a mix of complementary uses within the station area. The mobility and access of a station is influenced greatly by the development pattern around it. A mix of complementary, well-integrated land uses within walking distance of the station will allow more users to be captured in a closer area and will allow stations to be accessed more easily by walking and bicycling. A concentrated complementary mix of land uses also supports higher transit ridership. Mixed use can come in different forms. These can be residential-based, as shown here, and can be retail and office-based, as shown in these examples. The third aspect of TOD is community design, which calls for us to pay close attention to design details of all components that make up the station area. This includes making streets that connect to the station comfortable for walking and biking, providing housing within walking distance of the stations, and creating inviting public spaces. Community design is really important. Providing a diversity of housing choices within walking distance is also important. In addition, providing a diversity- Sorry. Got my slides a little turned around. Community design also means the care and attention we bring to park spaces around the station areas. Lastly, transit stations should be a permanent civic space in architecture that invokes pride and a sense of place and identity within the community. For TOD to be equitable, it needs to integrate strategies that provides access to jobs, services, and housing, and preserves existing neighborhoods and businesses. Ultimately, transit should be about connecting places, community resources, and amenities along the corridor to all our residents. TOD can enhance connectivity. The success of transit really is dependent on how well we can encourage safe and comfortable walking and bicycling trips. The more robust and tightly connected a street network is around a station. An example is in Hendersonville, North Carolina, the larger the capture area is of the station. TOD can also encourage transit supportive development. The mobility and access of a station area is influenced greatly by development pattern around it. Focusing a mix of complementary, well-integrated land uses within walking distance of a station will allow more users to be captured in a closer area and will allow stations to be accessed more easily by walking and bicycling. Enhance community identity. Community design calls for us to pay attention to design details of all components that make up the station area. This includes making streets that connect to the station comfortable for walking and biking, providing housing within walking distance of the station, and creating inviting public spaces. Examples include Spartanburg, South Carolina, and Belmont, North Carolina. Expand opportunities by optimizing access to transit. For TOD to be equitable, it needs to integrate strategies that also preserve existing businesses and identifies critical infrastructure that optimizes access to transit for all users and communities along the corridor. Balancing all three components supports creating equitable places for communities. Next slide. So that's all I have. And I don't know, Scott, if we'd like to take questions now or run through everything first.
Thanks, Yolanda. I think in the interest of time, why don't we just, why don't we continue on and just if everybody can hold their questions until the end, we'll have plenty of time for Q and A. Does that sound good? All right, so let's let's move on. So next, let's talk about the the TOD study. So this this is a study. So this study actually started back in 2020. And this is this is a project we worked on with the city of Charlotte and the town of Matthews in Mecklenburg County and Belmont in Gaston County. So this this work continued on and then we started working with the towns of Stallings and Indian Trail last summer. So we had our kickoff meeting for this project in July. And and the idea with this work was to make sure that the work that was being done on the rest of the Silver Line in terms of planning, in terms of looking at TOD, was also being done for the towns of Stallings and Indian Trail as well. And so so the funding was identified through CRTPO and we're very fortunate to be able to extend this work into into Union County as well. So just looking at the timeline here, just like I said, we started in July and you can see some of the work that happened before that. We had our public meetings in September and then we're we're obviously, you know, we're wrapping everything up now and we'll have the final Silver Line, the TOD report will be out soon. So in terms of public engagement, like I said, we held we held our engagement in September of last year. So that and it was a virtual meeting. And I believe actually a few of you were able to attend. And so this meeting, just for additional context, this was an extension of a series of meetings that we conducted for Charlotte and Matthews and Belmont. And it followed a similar format. Their format, due to the timing, was actually, we were actually able to have that in person. But but due to the COVID situation, we ended up doing this one virtually. So we had 13 people attend the meeting and we received only positive feedback from the people who attended that. We also offered a virtual public workshop for the entire corridor. So this was done in conjunction with Belmont, Charlotte, and Matthews. So the Stallings and Indian Trail content was placed alongside theirs and that ran for six weeks from October 8th to November 12th. And during that timeframe, the website had 251 unique visitors and of which 35 viewed material for Stallings and Indian Trails. So and that's a total of 12% of all of all of the viewers. And some of the key comments that we received, you can see on the right there, they emphasized safer pedestrian crossings along major roads, including Independence, and being thoughtful about park-and-ride options and access to the surrounding areas. So within Stallings itself, there are the process, actually, let me take a step back. The process we used identified several different types of stations. So we can go over those typologies in more detail if you want later on. But the most important detail for Stallings is to understand that the station type for Stallings is called a commuter station. And commuter stations are designed to be accessible by car from the key arterials and interstates, which in this case is Independence. And these stations typically include significant park-and-ride facilities for personal vehicles and also accommodation for other modes. So it's just important to note that it's not just a big, you know, parking facility. It's also, we also want to make sure people who live and work in the area around it can can access the station as well. So we we analyzed several key factors that informed the TOD study. And this, we're going to go clockwise around. So we'll start in the upper right. So the first is employment density, which you can see in the orange dots. It's actually a little hard to see on this map. And then but housing is shown in blue. And so these data provide context about where jobs and housing are located today, but also where there are opportunities to grow in the future. So both employment and housing opportunities are needed to support development around stations. And areas with greater density are typically more conducive to demand for for transit. So like I said, it's a bit hard to see here, but but essentially what what we're looking at is Stallings has a pretty typical density for suburban bedroom community. So next, next is existing land use. And this data shows, provides better context, excuse me, provides context to better understand the way land has been developed over time. So the locations of existing uses can help determine which areas have the greatest potential to successfully support development around transit stations in the future. And typically, what you see is commercial, which is shown in red, and industrial, which is shown in purple. These types of land uses are usually the best suited for TOD in addition to vacant land. So Stallings has a significant area right around the interchange there that that could support could support TOD, which is which is a which is a good thing. Next. So next is bicycle and pedestrian infrastructure. So understanding how people get to transit stations via all modes of transportation is is super important and it informs where future investment in infrastructure may need to occur in order to provide safe, convenient access to the stations. Stallings has sidewalks along one side of Stallings Road today. So it will be critical to support the station with new sidewalk facilities along Stallings Road, as well as Matthews Indian Trail Road and and other streets in the vicinity in the future. In a related concept, you can see the 10-minute walk shed. And a 10-minute walk shed is important because you want to make sure people who arrive to your town by train can get to their destinations without a car. And most people are willing to walk about 10 minutes to get to their destination. So in Stallings, we measured how far people can walk in 10 minutes based on the proposed station location, which is which is shown here, which is the purple dot there in the center. And there are, there are a few blocks in the area today. So but there's ample opportunity to plan for and expand this block network over time. So what you see is because that shape is kind of scrunched together, the existing network of streets doesn't allow for people who are walking to to travel very far, although they can get to quite a few locations. So so in summary, for this station area, there's there's three considerations to for for Stallings. The first is to capitalize on commuter access to Independence Boulevard and 485. The second is to support opportunities for new commercial and employment and office and and residential development and to pursue multimodal connections to the to the new hospital along Stallings Road and Matthews Indian Trail Road. All right. So this is a vision plan that that looks at, looks out maybe 25, 30 years from now about how potential development pressures related to the new transit system could be directed to reflect best practices and community desires in terms of future growth. So this illustration is meant to be something for people to react to. This is and it's it's based on concepts in the Monroe Bypass Small Area Plan and it shows how essentially how a grid of streets could evolve to support walkability along with new office buildings, housing for workers, and and including the preservation of existing single-family subdivisions. So it specifically identifies the area, sorry, that that plan specifically identifies the area around the station as a dense mixed-use core with a lively commercial hub. So these concepts were built into our study and the the image you see here in front of you today. Excuse me. And essentially, what you see here is a fresh look at the potential street network with with additional consideration for building placement specifically in designed to create more walkability. So keep in mind, this is intended to serve as a collaborative starting point and there will be opportunities to integrate these concepts in your upcoming comprehensive plan if if you choose. The residents who participated in this process were supportive of these concepts, but I do want to emphasize that more detailed planning will be needed, will will need to be done in order to ensure to ensure public support exists.
Scott, before you leave, could you just point out the station? Because I see it, but I'm not sure everybody else sees it.
Absolutely.
And the parking facility.
Yes, so the station. Well, I don't know if everybody can see that, but let me get, I'll get the pen. So the station is the black rectangle that's in the circle and the parking, the parking facility is right there. So that's the idea of where it would go. So it'd be set back off of Stallings Road just a little bit, which is a really good thing because it gives you an opportunity to have a building that fronts Stallings Road and the access road and and then another one up here. So that's when when we look at plans like these, that's the kind of, those are the kind of opportunities we look for. All right. So I also want to talk about Indian Trail for just a second. This and so this information, well, so it's important to note that even though this station is intended to serve Indian Trail, much of the development, much of the TOD opportunity here is actually in the town of Stallings due to the way the- Due to the way the 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 town limits are drawn in this area. So this station is identified as a write-up station. And write-up stations are typically accessed by walking and bicycling with specific accommodations for vehicular write-up and drop-off. Along with shared mobility. So there's typically limited personal vehicular parking and it may be. But it but that can be provided depending on site conditions and context. Bus conditions, sorry, bus connections typically occur on the street or on an adjacent block. And the stations, but stations can also include small bus layover areas. So and and the idea here is that this is this, this is the end of the line station, but essentially Stallings. Because of its access to Independence would serve as the main end of the line commuter station. So in this, in in this part, sorry, around this station, the employee, looking at employment density similar to similar to the previous one. The the employment and housing density is typical for suburban bedroom communities. Looking at existing land use data, it shows a lot more industrial and commercial space around the station. And so that's the station is roughly in the center. Of that area, just for reference. There's, there is no bicycle or pedestrian infrastructure along Matthews Indian Trail Road, although Indian Trail Road does have some sidewalks. And then if you look at that ten minute walk shed, you can kind of compare the shape of that to the shape that we looked at before in Stallings. This one is a bit larger because there are more streets in the area and which provide access to to more parcels. But there's still ample opportunity to build out a street network here and there's. We'll see. Yeah, but this, this is, this area is unique though because of because of the way the the town boundary lines are drawn. It's going to require some additional coordination between the two towns to to think about what this area. Should look like in the future and then how how that could get implemented over time. So the three, three considerations for this station area are, like I said, it's it's an end of the line station. And. So we need to think about how people would get there from Matthews, or sorry, from Indian Trail Road. And think about how people could. Get from that station to Indian Trails downtown and and their town center. And then last but not least, we want to make sure we support opportunities for commercial and light industrial redevelopment. Along with how new housing for workers. So and this is the, this is the plan for this area. So again, similar type of thing, you see additional street, street network that's that's being proposed. Again, the station is right here in the middle. And then this, on this one, it's a little different because of where the end of the state, the end of the line is, you do have an opportunity for. A rail trail, which is, which is generally proposed along the entire, the entire length of the corridor. Could extend that into downtown Indian Trail and then their town center down here. But. I know y'all aren't, y'all aren't interested in Indian Trail stuff. So but essentially because of the way the town limits are drawn, you end up with this area. North of the station and this area to the west, this, this map is rotated a little funny. These two areas, which are actually in Stallings. So. That's just something, something to think about in terms of how the, how these two stations will happen over time. So, so moving on. Let's talk about how all of this stuff can can get implemented. So typically, typically the process is to establish a community vision and then look at regulatory options. And things like capital projects to help implement it. So there's there's several buckets of tools available to the town and these are all supported by state law. Comprehensive plans, small area plans and corridor studies are the most common way to establish these these visions. Stallings has a comprehensive plan and and like I said before. Max tells me y'all are going to be starting this process later in the year. So that would be a great time to talk to the public in more detail about. These concepts and and transit oriented development as it relates to the future of your of your town. And last but not, or yeah, last but not least on this list is capital infrastructure programs, so CIP. These can be used to directly fund transportation improvements and they can include things like sidewalks, bicycle facilities. You know, traffic signals, all sorts of things. They can also create funding pools to, that you can use to allocate. As matching funds for grant opportunities through maybe through CRTPO or NC DOT. Right, next are the regulatory tools. So regulatory tools, so there are several different types of regulatory tools you can use to encourage development patterns that support. Transit use. So keep in mind that the main goal here is to allow transit. Or excuse me, to allow land development projects to create the mixture of uses around the station over time so that people will be able to walk to and and from the train. So, so one common approach to this is to use overlay, excuse me, overlay districts. And this tool can create a straightforward approach to immediately change the zoning rules in your town to support TOD. Without needing to revamp the entire existing zoning ordinance and districts. Overlays will typically apply to, but excuse me, will typically apply regulatory incentives. Not applicable to the base zoning districts. And they, and they would allow or disallow certain uses or conditions in support. Or waive certain provisions like parking ratios and things like that, that might apply to the base zoning districts. So essentially it gives you a way to to modify the underlying zoning to better support TOD. So TOD zoning could also be applied as a conditional zoning district in and of itself. And so and this process can be helpful in cases where an overlay approach is not ideal. Maybe because of challenges with the underlying base districts that would simply not be able to address or affect the type of change that you want to see over time. So and then next on the list is form-based codes. And these are a great way to guide building form and urban design in a station area. They are used in a variety of settings and they are intended to ensure that new development supports walkability. Because they are usually administered with a regulate, excuse me, with a regulating plan. They can be highly fine tuned to your local conditions and context and. And can support more unity and cohesion over time as as new development comes online. And they can also affect their community-wide patterns for streetscape, building frontages, street signage, things like that. So if you're thinking about. You know, ways to make it walkable, ways to make a station area feel a little bit more like that small town downtown that. That Yolanda mentioned earlier, this is one tool that can help do that. So and then last on this list is TOD building standards and these are more detailed regulations that are. That are usually incorporated into into an existing zoning ordinance to ensure. That building patterns are consistent across an area larger than a single site. So think of this as as an. You 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 could have your conventional zoning, but then you could add TOD building standards as a part of that. And I'm sure that Max would be glad to dive into any of these and provide you with with more information in the future. If you're, if you would like. Alright, and then the last bucket we'll talk about tonight is multimodal access and connectivity. So street and public realm standards as part of TOD zoning, so the, excuse me, these. Street, so street and public realm standards are are a part of TOD zoning districts and can ensure that a safe and inviting pedestrian network is created. With new development and that all streets are designed to be multimodally complete. So essentially. Building incomplete streets from the ground up. So and this is often paired with the TOD building standards. So these things go, go with each other. And then finally, TOD site plan and subdivision standards. These are typically a function of your subdivision ordinance and they're designed to address. The development of the local street network in a way that supports walkability. So that's a, that's a very quick overview of all these things. And I know we've covered a lot of ground tonight. So. So at this point, we'd like to open it up to you for questions and. Yeah, and and Max can help coordinate that as well, or however you guys would like to run it.
Well, hey Scott, this is Wyatt Dan. I got a question about the the parking around the station. Obviously, there's already development there. How does, how does that work?
Sorry. Sorry, I just want to make sure I wouldn't mute it again. So, okay, so the question is parking around the station. I guess, maybe could you clarify that a little bit more? Do you just mean in terms of buildings that have existing parking lots already there? Is that what you mean?
Yeah, there's already, you know, a trailer. Business, a hotel. You know, there's one vacant lot at the corner, so it it looks like that station's further down from the the vacant lot. So just. Do y'all, just buy the, buy the lot, buy the land, buy the business, or how does that work?
Oh, I see what you, I see what you're saying. So I think maybe that's a better question for John.
Yeah, thanks for that, Mayor. So what happens here typically is when we're developing the the corridor. We can only buy what we need for the actual station and operations of of the alignment, right? So. Really can't buy anything that you that you don't need. That's a little bit redundant, but basically if. If that platform area, the station, we need a parking deck, then. The transit agency would negotiate with the property owner to acquire that property for those uses only and and nothing more than, but nothing more than that.
Right, okay.
Question. Can you hear me? Okay, it sounds like this is like the biggest headache. They say headache, the biggest hurdle would be financing and getting county approvals for this to happen in Union County. Is, is that true? That we, that's, that's probably the biggest headache that we're going to have in this process?
Yeah, I I think that's, that's going to be the the biggest hurdle, David. I think that, um. You know, funding is always going to be an issue. It's an issue in Charlotte as well, as you know. So. I think in the other jurisdictions like yours and in in Gaston County, same issue. Because, you know, operating a light rail alignment costs a lot of money. There's maintenance. There's all kinds of different things that go into, you know, how do you keep it operational and and efficient and reliable? So that would have to be a conversation for, you know, town leadership, you know, county leadership. And with the city of Charlotte, of course, I'm involved in that too, but I think to have that discussion. Starts sooner than later would be beneficial, but yeah, that that would be a pretty big hurdle to figure out how to extend that beyond Beckhamore County jurisdiction.
John, has anybody in your group or any anybody met with the Union County Commissioners? It sounds like if you haven't, we need to set it up.
Our CEO, John Lewis, would probably be the person, the first point of contact for that interaction. Within the MTC as well. So I would think that he would be front and center with that discussion about funding in the region.
Okay.
Hey, this is Brad. Two, two, two questions. One is, I saw a slide earlier, Scott. I think you had a shot that showed Indian Trail Station area. Could you tell me or go back to that slide? Point out again, within the walk shed or wherever you call it, the circle. Yeah, you, you said that you just had to go back one.
This one?
Not one more. One more forward, yeah, right there. No, 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 forward. There you go. Yeah, the red, you just had the red circles.
Alright, okay.
What part of this station area is in the town of Stallings, did you say?
Yes, that's a good question. Let me.
Max knows, Max knows.
Alright, almost all of it is in Stallings. The whole silver line alignment is in Stallings. So you see where it bends and goes straight. And that's kind of where Indian Trail starts on the other side of the road. He's drawing it out well, but.
It's something more or less like that. So everything on this side. Is Stallings and everything on the other side is Indian Trail. It's roughly like, it might actually be more like right here. I'm not sure.
Yeah, okay, so just an observation. Yeah, just an observation is we, because we would tend to think lopping off the end would save some money for the project. It certainly would. And there's an argument made of why would you even go that far? I think we could make a case for. Our board could make a case that it's good economic sense for Stallings to have an Indian Trail Station because we'd have some development opportunities there. If it comes to that, I just wanted to point that out. That was new to me. I did not realize that. That a good half of the development opportunity or forty percent is in our town. But my bigger question, I guess, is, I I look at the commuter decks that I'm familiar with. And the only two I know are are the one down in Pineville, which is woefully not what we want. And the one up in the University City, which is better because it's got some retail around it. What are you, what's new? I mean, what's, those who built years ago, what's new that would keep our station from becoming? That, either in worst case Pineville, which is a huge concrete park and ride. Or University City, which again is a large parking deck surrounded by a little bit of ground for retail on a major thoroughfare. How we've twenty-nine. So I guess what I'm trying to think about, we're we're getting. We're getting a recommend alignment that that parks it right against the the expressway. And a large commuter designation parking deck. One of our biggest concerns will be. Form, function, feel, so that it doesn't kill us from a. We get the all the, all the negative of a commuter deck and not much positive because you don't, we don't work together to design it. Now, that's not a new question, so you probably have the answer, but what can we be thinking about in terms of that?
Yeah, that's a, that's a good question. And I don't know, John, do you maybe want to take a stab at that? I I mean, I have thoughts too, but I'm. It might be better if it comes from you.
Yeah, that that's another pretty good observation, Brad. So you know, the the parking deck, for those who don't know about that one at the end of line. Going toward Pineville, doesn't quite go into Pineville. That was the, really the first, of course, alignment and first iteration of. Having parking decks for commuters. So we didn't have the same kind of design standards. At that time for that parking deck. So that's why we don't have any, you know, ground floor activation with retail office or what have you. And it's kind of about, you know, kind of a broad commercial area. So we talk about scale and and the. And the height and everything else, then that kind of ties into it as well. I think that's about five or six hundred space parking deck, I believe. And then, as you, as you said, the one in your university area. We did update our TOD standards, regulation standard, development standard. So. Now decks have to have that ground floor activation. So that's kind of the, the two point O version of of the TOD standards, if you will. So as far as, you know, how that might look, it's down to the Indian Trail. We had the same question, of course, in Belmont at the other side. You know, what's the scale? How tall is it? How's it relate to the surrounding environment? I think all those things would would go into. You know, refining exactly what those stats would be for, for you all in your jurisdiction, plus meeting. The requirements for the number of cars that have to park in that deck to make it feasible for a commuter station. So. I think that's kind of to be determined in terms of how, in terms of how that would get refined along the way. I think there's always room for improvement. You know, we're updating our design standards every few years. We're doing that now with the Silver Line Project. And looking at our urban design framework, which is a set of design guidelines, if you will, for infrastructure decks. Bridges, those kind of things. So I think to answer your question, Brad, that's probably going to be that, look that differently for the towns, but. Just know that.
I guess, yeah, John, thank you. I mean, that's, that is. Okay, good answer. I guess maybe to add on to it, maybe to be more specific is. That all feels like that's down the road because you're at that point designing a parking deck because you've got funding, I think. You're sort of closer, maybe I'm wrong, but. Even if, if, if we do some of those regulatory and land use things that were on the slide toward the end about our tools and our toolbox. And we end up with a very dense, highly networked. Walkable bunch of sidewalks, bike lanes, and then the project that never funded. We're okay still, right? Because that's what we want anyway in this area. So would we be doing anything different? And TOD overlay perhaps for for our station area. That would hurt us if we never got a station here. I don't think so, but what am I missing?
Um, I, I think that's a good, that's a good comment, Brad. I think, I think the way that you want to have your, your area set up with the, you know, smaller blocks, uh, the walkability improvements with more street sidewalks. I think all that would fit well, whether there's transit or, or not. I think those are just kind of the bones, if you will, of having a good, a well-networked, um, uh, downtown, if you will. So I think there wouldn't be a, a loss, if you will, but, um, I, I think again, if you look at your, your town's, uh, master plan, comprehensive plan to kind of help, you know, guide that conversation as well would be the first, the first big step.
Yeah, and I'd, I'd like to add to that. I think, I think John is, is exactly right, and I also think that, you know, maybe a different way to look at it is, you know, if you're setting up this environment anyway, um, really, all the, all the train's gonna do is just change the market dynamics around the station, so it might change people's desire to, to build different types of, of products. Um, but regardless of what happens, this is, you know, this, this would be a way to, to get out ahead of it and be ready for it if and when it comes.
Scott, can you go back to the picture of, uh, the Stallings area?
Sure. This one?
Yes, sir. Yeah, I assume the parking is preferable as close to the station as, as possible, correct?
Yes, yeah, typ- typically you show it, you know, adjacent to the station.
Adjacent to it, because obviously there's a lot of land over by the hospital that's, you know, up for grabs right now, but, uh, that would be a
Right.
A walk down to it, so just was curious. I, 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 I knew the answer, but I wanted to hear it from you.
Yep, understood.
And if I could, just one question about that, kind of adding on to what the mayor just asked, is that with the hospital coming and kind of setting up shop, we're s- sort of already starting to see that this area is going to be potentially redeveloped, and right now, you know, a couple of the parcels, specifically the parcel that I think the station is currently shown at is, is vacant or up for sale. Um, I mean, given the growth pattern that we saw here over the last five years, or, you know, just the last eighteen months, the likelihood that those parcels are gonna continue to stay vacant throughout the eight-year time period that we're talking about here for development. Um, I guess my question goes to, h- how do we, uh, we make sure that there's not an apartment building built there? Uh, and you'll come back eight years from now and go, hey, we wanted to build a station there, but now there's a, an apartment building sitting there. And Max, maybe that's a question for you. I don't, I don't know.
Well, I mean, we, we would have to adopt a TOD, um, or an overlay aligning with the proposed Silver Line, kind of like a certain amount of boundary. Um, along that alignment to preserve it for the Silver Line. That would be, hey, sorry.
But, and so we would actually set aside property that we wouldn't allow to be developed?
Um, well, it's not that it wouldn't be allowed to develop. If the property is to develop, they would just, um, orient that development to help the Silver Line in the future be put there. Um, kind of like, um, our Connect Stallings Greenway Master Plan. If a development was to be built on a parcel that shows a greenway trail, we would require the greenway trail to be built. I mean, we wouldn't require the Silver Line to be built, but we would require that oriented development for the future of the Silver Line.
Right, and just to add to that, I think, you know, you, if you wanted to, you could also look at, um, right-of-way preservation tools as a part of that. So as that development comes in, you know, like Max said, you're not requiring them to build the, the line, but they're setting aside the space for it so that it can, it can be built in the future.
Okay.
Got a question. When, who's next? You're done. Alright, what are the pros and cons of switching the type of stations between Stallings and Indian Trail? It seems like the Indian Trail one uses much less acreage for parking, et cetera. So what are the pros and cons of switching those out?
Yeah, that's, so that's a good question. Um, I think, so, I mean, while some of the pros, like you said, if you were to to switch the station typology, you know, you, you could potentially, there's potential savings in terms of space, um, in terms of the amount of parking, um, that you would tend to provide. Um, but then the cons are, if, if you don't, I think if you don't properly plan for park and ride stations, people will just make their own way, and they could, they may end up parking wherever they want, be it in the hospital or in business parking lots, and it could create other challenges down the road that, um, may not be intended. Um, and it's kind of hard to predict exactly what, what all those could be. And I don't know, you know, John or Caitlin or anybody else wants to add to that, please feel free.
Oh, oh, what's the distance between this station and the Indian Trail Station? A mile?
Uh, y- uh, yes, it's about a mile.
So I mean, park and ride could just as easy be there.
It could, um, there, so, but the challenge or the, the opportunity here is that you have a station and a, and a parking structure that are both highly visible from, uh, from Independence Boulevard. So when you get into Stallings, it's further away. So there's, there's trade-offs there, and I don't, you know, maybe that's, that's more of a question that, or more of a perspective John could add to that. Uh, but you're right, I mean, there's, there's, there's no technical reason why you couldn't put a parking deck. I think it just has more to do with the context of where the, the physical alignment is.
It just takes that much fairly limited property out of realm of development, which would be a benefit to all of Stallings.
Yeah, that's, I mean, that's true. That's definitely a con. Um, I think, but I also think it depends on, you know, how how you look at the design of the deck. You know, John was talking about the idea that you could inc- incorporate, um, you know, businesses on the ground floor and, you know, some places like in Charlotte, there's actual entire buildings that wrap the parking structure, so you don't even see it. So there's, you know, there's different ways to look at a, at a parking deck and, and how it functions, but, but your, your points are valid and, and well-taken.
And John, would it be conceivable ever to, for cats to put a parking deck that's, uh, like in this picture, uh, uh, that's a block and a half away from the station? And, and what, I think David's point's a good one, in that if, if you just think about what will happen in this area, most of the riders are gonna commute to Charlotte, will drive down Independence, they'll exit on, you see Richard Baker Drive there, and they'll get to the end of Richard Baker Drive across the freeway, you see where I am, and then you'll turn left, go under Independence Boulevard, turn right on that little new road, there you go, go under the Boulevard. Then you'll turn left or right there, and then you'll park, and then they'll do the very same thing. They'll come out, get in their car, drive at the freeway and head back out on East Q and Boulevard there, and they don't do anything. They don't spend a dime in Stallings or any time in Stallings. So my point was, i- it, was there any opportunity to move the parking deck away from the station, so you create a corridor where they walk through some retail and some shops and some housing, a- and you make them spend money in our town because they'll get coffee on the way to the train kind of thing.
I hear you, Brad. Um, typically we want to have that deck within a very convenient, uh, walking distance from the actual station, so you won't really see it uh, too far away, uh, from the station platform itself. Uh, they, they should be, if not a budding, then at least adjacent. Um, but, but, uh, to your point, I, I think it's also worth mentioning that this is a very early study and, um, back to an earlier point about, you know, should, could a parking deck be elsewhere? Should it be a park and ride versus a deck? I think all those things are worth, you know, talking about in the future. Uh, we even have, you know, in our topology for stations, um, what happens, you know, maybe a station might start out as one thing, but it becomes another later on. It could start out as a service lot, uh, and maybe through joint development, it could become, you know, something higher density, mixed use, so they could take on different types of maturation along the way. Uh, they may not be one type of station forever. Uh, so I, I think all those questions are very valid and, and, and well accepted. I think even going back to having people spend more, more money in, around the towns and, uh, in their retail location. I think that goes back to the, the, the planning for, around the station is, how much retail can you have around the station where yeah, you might park there, but do you also want to get out again and, and walk around a few blocks around a neighborhood? Kind of similar to what you see, they kind of downtown Matthews. So, um, I think those are all very valid points, but, um, again, the deck itself, we don't want to have it also, you know, too far into a neighborhood itself, you know? It needs to be pretty close to a major thoroughfare, a freeway, so it is very visible. Uh, and again, it can serve the customers who need to get to or from the station, uh, pretty quickly.
Hey, going back to funding, uh, as somebody, as Scott, you just said, it's about a mile between the two stations. Uh, when we first started talking to cats about this, you know, we, we didn't envision it going past Stallings, so, uh, I'm looking at the, uh, from Union County McLine to the, uh, Stallings stations, you know, probably a half mile or, or in, in that ballpark, so the, the mile after the Stallings station is twice as expensive. And, uh, knowing the finances, uh, uh, of, uh, Union County, you know, uh, I don't anticipate, uh, yeah, it's gonna be a hard sell to those county commissioners to, to find something all, that's twice as expensive all the way to Indian Trail, especially since no county commissioner lives within ten miles of this station. They all live on the eastern part of the county, and that's always amazing to me. So, uh, is that, uh, a feasible thing? Uh, feasibility that you could just stop in Stallings?
I think that idea is on the table, uh, Mr. Mayor. I, I don't think that's, that this is a hard, you know, this is what it's gonna be.
Yeah.
Uh, I, I think, I think you make some very valid points, you know, because it will come down to cost, absolutely. And, uh, what's, what's the biggest bang for your bucks? Should it, you know, stop here and get that captured from, you know, a mile or, or less away? Maybe that serves everybody just as, just as well, because funding is gonna be that big issue, so uh, over, over time, the engineering piece will be looked at in terms of, uh, when do you get your most value? To defeat the, to defeat the end of line, uh, maybe it should be, for all your points that you stated.
Yeah, how, how much are we talking about for, uh, per mile? Or, or how do y'all figure out cost? Is any way to give us this, I won't hold you to it, I, I know the number. I know the numbers are al- are always increasing, but, uh, what kind of nu- uh, money are we talking about?
Uh, I couldn't give you a real good guess on that one because it changes, and, uh, this being so, so far away. Um, I, I hate to, I, I hate to wager a guess. I will let our, our engineer manager talk about that, uh, because these are the stuff every day with the details and, and the, and the finances of developing this. I would, I would defer to our, our, our engineer, uh, team to kind of give it a better answer.
Sure.
I think, John, though, maybe I could add, um, and, and why, I think it speaks to why this starting point and work is, um, kind of important to getting the conversation started. The, the Federal Transit Administration, when they look at funding projects like this, they really do look at it in the return on investment for how transit-ready a community is and, and how, the density, all the things that Scott and Yolanda talked about. Um, so, eh, that question of will it just stop in, in Stallings or, or go all the way to Indian Trail? And it's more like, what's that return on investment gonna be than that sheer dollar amount? That obviously plays a part in it, like John said, but, um, I'd encourage you all to look at it more from that perspective of where is, where are you gonna focus your growth and getting transit-ready and, and getting that return on investment?
Politically wise, why the, um, biggest town in, in, in Union County is, is Indian Trail. So by including the stop over there, we might get a little more political clout backing the, the, the push for funding for it. If it's just Stallings, like you said, we're only a half mile away-ish, and, uh, sixteen, seventeen thousand people, it'd be harder, harder sell, I think, to sell it to, uh, the county.
We'll let, uh, Mr. Lewis.
Yeah.
Yeah, the Commissioners, but, uh, you know, all the development that's, uh, gonna be around the hospital, as we know, the, the type of development we're looking for, I don't know what's gonna come down around, uh, Indian Trail, other than another apartment building, and, uh, that's not, we won't, not what we want, so.
We won't, but boy, there's a lot of property on our side of the line there next to that, uh, Indian Trail thing that we can, yeah, we can control the development on.
Alrighty, Scott, what else y'all have? Is, more slides or where, where are we at?
Uh, no, sir, that's it. That's all we got for you tonight.
Okay, well, I won't, anybody else have any questions or comments for Scott and John and their teams?
Yeah, I, I do. Uh, so, one, going back to something Brad was talking about, and that is people just essentially coming in, parking their car, and going on about their day, uh, riding uptown and then coming back and not really giving a thought. Is there, uh, the, is it, uh, possible to include businesses in the, um, I guess the park and ride area? So, uh, I, I know, uh, right now, basically, and I used to ride the one in Pineville all the way uptown, so you'd park and you'd get on the train and you'd go up, and you'd see people of all their coffees and their food that they picked up on the, the way. There was no ability to actually buy something at the station. And I always felt like that was a major, um, loss, because you could have had a, a few businesses, yeah, mainly restaurants or something set up, so that people could do that. So is that, had been looked at? Is that possible?
Go ahead, Scott.
Yeah, well, yeah, ma- maybe it's better for both of us to weigh in here. I, you know, just from my perspective, I think a lot of that depends on how the, the station, or sorry, how the, the parking facilities are set up. I mean, certainly you have stations like that in Charlotte, right? Like in Uptown Seventh Street Station has businesses that directly abut the platform, so it, it, it can be done. Um, I think it's just a matter of being thoughtful about the design of the station, or the design of the parking relative to the station.
I, I'll just add kind of an anecdote from some other work we did, um, in, uh, along the Silver Line in Belmont. So through conversations with, uh, Belmont Abbey and the Walmart, which is basically adjacent to the park and ride that's proposed in Belmont, um, there was, I guess, some excitement from Walmart and, and that developer about not, um, relocating Walmart, but doing some more urban infill development between Walmart and the park and ride, because just the sheer visibility of people getting off of Wilkinson Boulevard and onto basically into the parking lot and ultimately into the park and ride, just that sheer vi- visibility presents opportunities. Um, so I, I hear you that it's, eh, you can kind of just see people getting on and off the highway and just going straight to the parking garage, but what we've been hearing from developers is just, again, that visibility of people getting off of Independence, or in, in Belmont's case, getting off of Wilkinson, in this case, just getting off of Independence and seeing their business, um, is enough to be mo- more enticing for development. Um, and so, uh, I hear you that they're kind of getting off, getting on a garage and getting back in their cars and going home, but they're definitely not having that same visibility if they're just going by on Independence. Um, and you don't have that park and ride facility. So I just wanted to share that anecdote that, that, that can, that's kind of a, a neat example along the same line that we've heard from developers and kind of how they view that facility and, and what it means for more development.
Yeah, and, and what I would just say is, kind of the counter is Pineville already has that, right? So you have the Target and you have a lot of shops across the way, it's a major road. And I'll, I'll just tell you, I, I mean, I watch people plenty, no one drove across the street. Everyone would turn right because I would be stuck behind them coming out. Um, and I'm not picking on it, I get it, it's, it's a good idea. I, I just, I feel like, sort of, with the idea of having, you don't want to have people have to walk from the park and ride to their train too much. Same thing with, you don't Same thing with, you don't want to have the businesses too far away. And is there ability to have businesses located yeah, right there or even in the parking deck? Uh, you you go to some places in over, uh, I mean, I think DC, they have some place, small places in in some of the train state, in some of the metro stops where you can buy coffee and all that. And they're very popular. So that's why I mentioned it.
I have a comment. Um, so, yeah, thanks for bringing that up. I think you know, we're going to be looking at tweaking our future land use plan and small area plan for the area. I think we could definitely put new future lane designations for maybe a restaurant or retail by that station location in the, and we can add the transit oriented development, put an overlay to incentivize those types of developments like a, like a coffee shop right near the light rail. So people can go shop there and get on the light rail and go uptown. Um, I would say that's something we can look at at a future meeting. Um, we haven't, uh, this is going to just to start the discussion. So I'm glad you brought it up. Um, so since you're interested in that, that's something to think about when, um, we do do those updates to those plans.
I got one last comment. Two or three years ago Katz sponsored, um, uh, a tour, a guided tour from, uh, I think it was uptown to University City and back, or I don't know, somewhere along there. But it was guided by, I forget who, but they talked about the development and the changes between the South Line and the North Line and the changes how it, how they learned from the the Pineville area to what they have going north. And I was greatly impressed by the how they integrated the retail. Um, oh yeah, Alex, you were there. Um, how they integrated the retail to the parking, to the park and ride. And it was all like really well done. And that's more the vision of what I think we would have than the giant park and ride facility down in Pineville. That I think everybody knows that what that looks like and how it doesn't actually facilitate um, walking and placemaking and all that. It's a, it's a great place to park your car and hop on the train and that's it.
Yeah. And to that, and to that point, just, uh, just to kind of respond to Graham and David, your comment, you know, your zoning regulations will help to kind of enforce that. Um, if you've got these decks that are common or whatever around you, then uh, you can say, all right, since you're zone for TOD or whatever, and and you've got this deck here, then or these other buildings, you can have ground floor requirements, uh, for shops, for residential, for office or what have you. So I think part of that ties back into your zoning regulations and how you can update those to get at the goals that you're talking about.
And I did have one additional question, kind of beating the Pineville parking to death, but, uh, poor Pineville. Have you studied the amount of cars that are parking in there and and, uh, how congested it gets? So uh, as an example, I if you, I I know from my own experience, if you come at, say, eight forty-five in the morning, you are not finding parking. There, I know that there's some parking outside the parking deck and that fills up. And then there's a Volkswagen dealership and they have taken measures to make sure people aren't parking on their own property. And then uh, I, uh, the few times I've seen people going over to Target Shopping Center, it seems to be that's their last resort. They park and then they have to cross over was it South Boulevard, a a very congested part of the street. So not only is it massive parking deck, it's kind of hideous. It it also fills up. And how, uh, have we studied that? Do we know what the the right number is and how how we can avoid that in the future where we're not having people, to the mayor's point, I think, parking in the hospital?
I think as as we move further along in the analysis of, um, that commuter capture, that'll help to kind of guide what that number will be. I mean, it's going to be a baseline of what a parking deck, you know, how many cars should be there. Uh, it can't really be a hundred, needs to be, you know, at least three or four hundred cars on up. But then you run into the, uh, aspect of, you know, how does that fit in with the character of the area that it's in? Uh, you don't want to, like a ten story parking deck or something like that. So um, I'm not sure, uh, now with, um, pandemic numbers, how, I mean, of course, it affects ridership and I'm sure there's a available space down at that deck now. But you're right. If you get there past eight forty-five, you know, nine o'clock, you're not going to get a space in that deck. Uh, so I think the number of spaces will will be looked at as we get further along, along down the line.
All righty. Well, we planned for about an hour. We're over that, uh, it, you know, I know what our next steps are is we need to take those, uh, tools that Scott outlined and get with Max and preserve this area with an overlay district, I would imagine. But, uh, as far as y'all, uh, Scott and John, what is y'all's next steps? Well, you know, where do we get and where do we, uh, where are we involved? And, uh, what does the next year look like?
Sure. So so I'll go first, um, for uh, in terms of this study, uh, we're we're wrapping it up now. We'll have the final, Caitlin can probably tell us when the actual final report will be available, but then we'll be, uh, we'll be wrapping up and closing out.
Yeah, the, um, we currently have, uh, we're currently wrapping up getting all the final comments in for the final report, which these, the, a lot of the information Scott presented tonight is included in that report. Um, and then we are wrapping that up through the month of February and closing out that study and and the fin- and delivering the final version of the report, um, to be distribute, to be available publicly uh, by the end of, by the end of February. Um, which February starts tomorrow. So, uh, by the end of next month, we will have this study wrapped up in the final report and, um, John, I don't know if you want to speak to the broader project and next steps.
Yeah, what happens next? Yeah, that's what I'm interested in.
Yeah. So per the schedule, uh, right now we're in that fifteen to thirty percent, uh, design phase. And that'll probably wrap up the next year and a half or so. Um, then the next step will be, uh, to get to the next phase for the sixty-five percent design plans. And in between that time, we'll be applying for federal funding, uh, so we can move forward. So after this study is done, uh, the engineering team is going to be coming back out again to the public to talk about the environmental review, uh, that process, um, plan, review and other related, um, activities. So from from this point, it really kind of trans transfers from a TOD focus with with these kind of meetings then to a design focus and refining the station, um, alignments and design and topologies. So that kind of work will just keep going for the next, next few years.
All righty. And then, uh, well, y'all, uh, I know this, Aaron, we're recording this, right? Or can we? Uh, because I know Linda Paxton wanted to be on this call, but she couldn't make it. And, uh, I value her opinion since she's used to be the vice chair of Cartbo. So, uh, uh, just want to make sure we can get it to to other people. Uh, secondly, I see the construction is five to eight years away. Is it now, is now the time for John Lewis to come out and talk to our county commissioners or are we at that point? What is y'all's recommendation on that?
Well, not quite. But the five to eight year timeframe is kind of at the end after all the other uh, efforts are are completed. So right now, and that second diamond, we're in pre-project development, and that's from now until maybe three years at the most. Then after that, then we go into project development, but sixty-five percent, that's another two years. Then it's engineering to kind of round out the design piece. That's another one or three years. So then we're looking at, again, construction, early twenty thirties, mid twenty thirties, once you add all those years up together.
All right, mid twenty thirties. All right.
Hey, John, it's Alex here. Quick clarification question for that timeline. Uh, my understanding is that, uh, Katz is moving forward with the, uh, pre-project development, the fifteen percent and thirty percent design for the Mecklenburg uh, county areas, but not the Gaskin or the Union County areas. Those jurisdictions would have to provide funding in order to kind of get to that fifteen and thirty percent design and thus to kind of stay on the timeline. Is that correct?
Uh, that is correct, but I think we've been talking about how we can maybe include those extensions earlier than later. Um, but I don't, I don't have the final answer on that one yet, Alex, but I I would probably again, talk to Andy about that thinking about if we could include those in in design before the end. I think that would be preferable if we had the funding for that.
Okay. Thank you, John.
Sure.
All right. Any other questions from, uh, council or for our guests? Well, thank you all very much for taking the time to explain it. It was, uh, very helpful. So, uh, just, uh, hopefully we can put it together here to come into Union County.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
We might ask the hospital for some money. So they, you know, that goes.
Might as well.
We talked to them when it was coming in.
Yeah. All right.
I think, I think one of y'all should run for county commission between the next eight years. How about you, Wyatt? Do that first.
Well, we need Melissa Merrill on county commissioners. We need
Good idea.
All right. We need somebody in Stallings, Indian Trail on the county commissioners and because as I said, those guys all live on the eastern part of town and and, uh, getting them to spend money on this side of town is, uh, you know, wiring their water sewer here. Somebody should have been thinking about that ten years ago. But, uh, we'll cross that bridge later. All right. Thank you all.
Mayor, can we get a motion to adjourn, please?
All right.
Motion second.
Motion by Shoal, second by Richardson, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All righty, guys. Have it. Thank you all.
Thank you.